Okay, I'd like to call the city council meeting of April 16th, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Woods.
Unmute yourself.
Here.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
And Mayor Police.
Here. As the clear quorum present, please stand during the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can't stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. For which we stand here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice for all. First off, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, 2020. Alderman Sisnarsky motion to second.
Second, Sorrentino.
Sunny is now in. Let the record show Sunny is in.
Welcome in, Sunny.
I thought I was in on the roll call.
Okay, uh, motion, we have a second. Any corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters? And not listed on the agenda? Anybody, anybody there?
Mayor Nancy Cannon is here in case there's any questions.
But she wants to speak during her election.
I don't know that she needs to, or wants to speak. She just thought if there was any questions, she wanted to have the presence.
Thank you. Welcome, Nancy.
Um, okay. So I have no written communicate this evening. I do have under mayor's report. Can you guys hear me okay?
No, it's so much static.
Somebody has mute there when you're not speaking. If you could put your mute button.
It's fading.
All right, so under mayor's report, we will start with the Arbor Day. Proclamation 2020. In 1872, J. Sterling Morton passed, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture, that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And where Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by winds in water, cut heating and cooling flunks, moderate, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and produce, provide habitats for wildlife and various trees, our renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas the trees in our city increase property value against the economic vitality of business area and beautify our community. And whereas the trees, wherever they are planted, are sources of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I am the Justice League Mayor of City Wooddale. We hereby proclaim April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day. And the city of Wooddale, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to grow out in the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generation.
Next, uh, just want to make a couple of comments. For those that are listening, vehicle sticker renewals. The city council understands the financial strain facing our residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. Ease that burden. The council has approved the decision to authorize vehicle stickers 2020 through 2021 at no cost to residents. All residents who have a current vehicle on file receive a mailed sticker to display on their vehicle. Stickers must be displayed in the lower passenger side of the front windshield by June 30th. New or additional vehicles and/or updated information can be provided to City Hall during regular business hours at 630-766-4900. And then on behalf of the entire city council, I want to thank our staff, the entire staff, and all departments for keeping things moving forward here in town during this pandemic. I've had a couple of residents actually call me and tell me that they've seen our guys out and thanking us for keeping things running. Next, city manager's report. Mr. Mermis.
Yes, I have two items tonight. First item, a bit of good news. If you have been out going to the grocery store or going for an essential service, you may have noticed that the city did hang the new spring banners on Irving Park Road and part of Wooddale Road. So those are up. My second item is due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, for the safety of the entire Wooddale community, we have made the difficult decision to postpone or cancel certain events. We have done this with Bike with the Cop, Public Works Open House, Arbor Day Celebration, the Green Fair, and most recently, the Memorial Day Parade. The city values the health and well-being of its citizens above all, and looks forward to being able to provide these community events again in the future. We invite all residents to follow the city's social media and visit our website for the most up-to-date information as special event information is updated. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mermis. And just to throw something on, on special events, I was on a call this morning with DMMC. And quite a few communities already have canceled a lot in June from what they were saying, and some were thinking possibly July was also going to be canceled, but still had not made that determination. There'll be more discussion on that going forward. Next, consent agenda. If no objections, do I have any objections? I have three items on the consent agenda. Otherwise, I need a motion.
And Alderman Jacob, I make a motion.
Who was second?
Mike.
Mike, there was no objection, correct? Is that correct? All right, I need a roll call. We have a motion and a second.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods. Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley. Unmute. Alderman Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
That's everybody, right?
Yes.
And that passes. Thank you. Next, we need a motion to include the items on the agenda. Item number one, approval of special holiday decoration for the city of Wooddale Clock Tower and Mount Natu, the $17,652.86. In ordinance amending the municipal code of the city of Wooddale to provide seniors a discounted sewer-only rate. Item number three, in ordinance adjusting the city of Wooddale master fee schedule. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Make that motion.
Second.
So Randy and Peter with a two. Yep. Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
And Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning and zoning. Alderman Jacob.
Yes, uh, and I make a motion for an ordinance amending chapter six, articles 16, section 6.1601, 6.1602, and 6.1604 of the city of Wooddale Municipal Code regarding residential rental property. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second.
I have a question.
Good. Alderman Wesley.
So in that code, do we, can we talk about making inspection every year?
I, I can answer that, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, under the current residential, we put it under the residential, residential rental inspection section, and there is an annual inspection that's done as part of that.
Yeah. Can I ask a follow-up?
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So to Alderman Eugene Wesley's point, Pat, I sent you a follow-up. So while I, I understand that annual is great, from, from what I understood, if they pass, they are exempt from having an inspection the following year. Is that correct?
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I, I know. I don't believe that's, that's correct. They would, well, first of all, if we do detect or somebody reports a violation, then we would come out and give them a notice and do, if an inspection was necessary, if they, if they requested a permit, we'd do the same. But I believe unless Ed has got something the contrary, we're doing those, attempting to do them all on an annual basis, obviously staffing.
No, okay, so.
Hold on. Go ahead, Ed.
Just to clarify, so Alderman Wesley is correct that, so typically, we will do an inspection. If they get a clean bill of health, then as our inspector is only part-time at this time, we do, they get a clean bill of health, and we go back the following year. So it's really clean bill of health every two years. And I know that some of the elected officials have concerns with this. Just as a reminder, during the budget process, we did talk about moving that inspector up to a full-time position. And I think with those increased hours when we get past the COVID-19 event, that's something I know the elected officials feel strongly about, as do I, and I think we'll be able to move that up to an annual inspection.
Thank you.
Alderman Messina is raising his hand.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So is that something, Pat, we need to amend now? Because that would make me feel better? Or do we automatically, can it just change?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, that would be in line with the, the current policy for regular rental inspections. And I, and I was under the understanding that we, I know that they were doing them as a practical matter, every other, but I was under the impression we're doing them every year. But we can, we can conduct it on an annual basis, provided we've got the staffing to do so.
Do we?
So you don't need to amend, there's no need to amend the, the ordinance as it is presented.
Well, Alderman Messina has a follow-up.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So if you ticket me in my off-year, and we change it to every year, so you, I'm in my off-year thinking I'm good, because I passed the first year. You never formally updated the code. There was no amendment back to one year, and I get, I mean, I guess, I guess it doesn't make sense. Why we, why wouldn't we just pass it with an annual now? Because I, in this way, there's no, there's no question. That's my hesitation and why I followed up with you after. Not if I do something wrong, but it's just an automatic annual, there's only three currently, and I mean, the whole problem, we only have three currently. I don't, don't see this becoming the Airbnb capital of the planet. I don't think it'd be asking too much to make this an annual just so for the life safety concerns. It's not easy and sleep easy, knowing that we don't have to worry about people shortcutting or not replacing carbon monoxide detectors or smoke detectors or whatever, whatever might pop up.
This is, this is.
Again, go ahead, Ed. Mr. Cage.
Thank you. So that is the intent with the increase in hours with the, the current part-time inspector. When he goes full-time, which was included in the budget, the intent was to do that annual inspection. So I think on the books, we've been struggling to, to do, you know, the annual inspection simply just, we don't have the man-hours. That's not going to be a problem moving forward. So I hear the concerns, I share the concerns, and we will take care of it on an annual basis, for sure.
Hold on one second.
If I could, Mayor.
Just to clarify what Randy's asking, so once we have this full-timer, this is automatically an every-year thing that they're going to check on? Or do we have to put something into the motion to change the code? Mr. Bond.
Yeah, and I understand Alderman Messina's concern, and we can do that annual inspection now. We just don't have the staffing to be able to do it. So there's nothing would need to go into the, into the code. It would be a matter of what, and as, as Mr. Cage indicated, it's in the budget currently. So all that we would do is then put that in practice and conduct those on an annual basis.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense, because if I'm in my off-year, if I'm in my off-year, the code reads as if you pass my first year, I, I skip the next year, and then you just decide to show up my house or call me out of the blue and tell me you want to do an inspection. If it's not written in the code, how, how could we hold someone legally bound to that code, to Mayor Police's point, if it's not amended in the code or passed that way up front?
If I could, because, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, I'll, I'll pull that code section up, but I don't believe that it's, it gives an off-year statutorily in our code gives you an off-year inspection break. That's just been the practice with the staffing.
We're just doing that administratively, not per code.
Correct.
Not per code, okay.
This is, yes, that is correct. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cage. All right, are you good now, Alderman Messina? Any other questions?
I, I, I'm okay. I just, I really wondering, since we only have, what, three Airbnbs, why it can't be accomplished even with a part-timer? But I obviously have not sat through one of those, well, I've lived through one of those inspections, and they're three hours long. So I guess I'm just wondering how, how we couldn't accomplish three inspections. But again, I don't know the workload of the part-timer, so that's fine.
Mayor, can I, Mayor, can I chime in real quick?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
I, I think the intent of the way attorney Bond had written the code, it was to not distinguish between rental properties and Airbnb properties to be more uniform, whereas there was a single code for all those. So it's not, it, it's in totality. So it's not three Airbnbs being separated out for inspections. It's they're just lumped in with our inspection program, which with the full-time inspector would inspect every rental unit, including Airbnb, one time annually.
If I could, Mayor? Yeah, that's correct. And what we did is we changed the definition section to provide for the short-term rentals. And we also wanted to distinguish from somebody renting it to their brother-in-law for a short time while his house is being built or, or whatever. So this covers those, and it, again, it puts it in, so we don't deprive someone of a property right just because they've got an Airbnb. There's some legal issues there from a constitutional standpoint. So what this does is it gives the city the authority to investigate or to inspect those Airbnbs, and they're going to, the, the code allows for it on an annual basis. There is no off-year code provision. It's just been, that's been the practice, and that practice, it sounds like, is changing with the staffing. And, but it, it's going to allow the, the building department to conduct the, the inspections of the Airbnb, just like they would any other residential rental unit. And that way, we don't run afoul of the law and someone saying we're compromising property rights, on the one hand, and yet we still are able to, which we don't currently do, is regulate Airbnb-type short-term rentals. So this accomplishes both of those objectives. And again, it's done in, in the course of the inspections. It provides for an annual basis, and, and hopefully the staffing will be sufficient to be able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a second. Let's do a roll call.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
Alderman Sisnarsky. Alderman Sisnarsky. Unmute.
Uh, I'm unmuted.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman E. Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
Yes.
And that passes.
Okay, next, an ordinance approving the grant of a special use permit and major site plan review to allow operation of an employment agency at the property located at 345 East Irving Park Road, Wooddale, Illinois. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's that, Tony?
Yes.
Any questions?
Yeah, it cannot be recognized.
Go ahead, Alderman Catalano.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that the handicap parking has been addressed.
Mr. Cage.
Uh, yes, this is Ed. Yes, we've, we've noted that there is a parking space in conjunction with the sightline that will be striped as one handicap space to bring it to in compliance with the state code. Thank you.
Follow-up, Alderman Catalano?
No, that's fine.
Any other questions? Mayor, who's that?
Alderman Wesley.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley.
So the other thing is addressed too, about them or parking in our parking lot that we own the building? That they cannot use that for parking?
Yes, we, we know, well, we know that, and they should know that. Mr. Bond, did you, or Mr. Cage, somebody?
Yeah, Mayor, this is, Pat Bond, yes, that's been addressed. That was a, done by a tenant who's no longer in the building. Their, that property is city property, and it cannot be used for that purpose. And anybody who's there can be, is subject to being either ticketed or towed. So, and I've spoken to the property owner. That's been communicated, and she appeared to me that the tenant who was using that property is, they took action to remove that tenant from their building.
You have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yeah, it does. It's for the chief. Did we, and then they, legal, do we get those signs for the municipal parking out front of that building?
Can I finish my question? Hold on. Hold on.
We had a problem with that one. We had a problem with that. That's the one we had a problem with, that with the cones out front saying it was parking for them only.
Who's, who wants to take that? Chief or Pat?
I can jump in. I, on the hemlock address, I don't, I don't recall anything with cones over there. I know there was concerns over on Edgewood that the one business was saying it was only for them, and we addressed that issue. And then on Catalpa, we had the long-term parking, and we addressed that with the owners, and they've, they have not been storing long-term there anymore.
Yeah, follow-up.
Go ahead, Alderman Sisnarsky.
Yeah, that was the one, that's the chiropractic building we're talking about, correct?
This is the one, right.
Yeah, that's the one, that's the one I took the pictures of, showed you the cones. She made up signs saying parking for chiropractor only, all else must move. I'm just saying, I, those are where we were supposed to sign about all the municipal ones to keep parking at a minimum for shopping. Not to be, not for people to park there all day, not employees.
Right, yeah.
That was one.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that's been a problem since. So we did.
No. Well, I'm sorry. Maybe, yeah, I thought we were putting signs up on all of them. That, maybe I was mistaken.
Yeah, you know, I think we could probably address it if it comes up, and if we need to add additional stuff, we can. But I think all the problems that we had months ago were dealt with.
And Mayor, that would be, if I could, that would be an enforcement issue then down the road if that does create a problem, but it, it doesn't appear as great. It's going to be, it's been addressed already.
All right, thank you. Alderman Wesley, can you hear me now? I'd asked if you had a follow-up. You weren't answering.
Yes, I did. So, so I do, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no.
So obviously, last night, when I drove home last night, there just happened to be a car parked on our property again. The Helen's Deli or Helen's Restaurant. So how is that resolved already? Where's that car from?
Um, if I could jump in as the chief here.
Go ahead, chief.
Yeah, you know, we've been staying really on top of that, and patrol has actually, if someone has shown up and parked there, we've either issued or towed in the past. If there was one out there for a short period of time, certainly, we would address it. But we really have been on top of that, and if you call us when there's one out there, we'll handle it. But I don't think there's anything coming from any business over there. It might be an apartment or something, but we've really been keeping that lot clean and no cars parking over there. Every time I've been by, there's been nothing there.
I have a question for Mr. Bond. I know I had mentioned about putting a chain on that parking lot so nothing, nobody can get in, right? But Mr. Mermis then says, but then we've got maybe liability issues or whatnot with the chains. What about if, is there a sign that is city, city property, no parking or something? That your car will be towed, or can we do something like that, Ben?
Well, we could, but you can, I mean, it is available to the public. So if somebody wanted to come by and, and park there and go for a stroll through town, they'd be able to. They can't leave it there, but not on Helen's Deli, but on the, on the parking, on-street parking.
No, I'm talking about the, the restaurant parking lot that we own.
Yeah, and, and again, that's going to, we can certainly put a signage up there. I agree with manager Mermis. We don't want to have, you know, a chain there. Hopefully, that'll be developed at some point in time in the future. But in the interim, I think the best course of action is if anybody sees somebody parking over there, simply notify the police department. The chief can then, you know, make sure that his guys are going over there and either, either ticketing or towing it. Either one of those is going to get prompt compliance. We don't want to put chains all over the, you know, the visible piece of property, and there's other methods of doing that that can accomplish the same objective without any potential liability.
And that's why I asked, should we put a sign up this way? There is a written sign, so they don't say, oh, there was no sign. It was open, yada, yada. Again, we can discuss that later, no problem.
Okay.
Well, this is Alderman Jacob.
Go ahead, Alderman.
A, a simple solution to this is the city has a towing company that tow's for the police. The towing company put up a sign that you will be towed if you're parked in there. This is private property.
Right, that's what I was saying. So we can handle that.
That would be the easiest thing.
That doesn't have to be handled with this project, but we'll.
Mayor, can I chime in?
Go ahead, Mr. Mermis.
Yeah, that's, that's an easy fix. We'll, we'll, we'll handle that on the staff level. Some signage doesn't hurt anybody, and it adds an extra layer of deterrent. We will get that going with Public Works and get a sign up in short order. I've already notified it down.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Alderman Woods.
Go ahead, Alderman.
Did, I don't know who's going to take this, Jeff or Ed, so did we get any updated schematic or drawing of the property to better dictate what is going on in that building? That was one of my.
Sure, sure, I can take that. There was, unfortunately, when we took this to committee, there was some confusion because the survey actually was submitted and in the information, but it was in a subsequent secondary email, not in the packet, but in the PowerPoint subsequent, subsequent email. And then the requested detailed drawing about the inside of the building kind of was submitted after the fact, and you do have it in your current packet this week. So we did address that, and it is in your packet.
Well, Alderman Woods.
Uh, no, that's good. I, I didn't see it, but Ed. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions. We have a motion, we have a second. Can we get a roll call?
Alderman Sorrentino.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
No.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? Alderman E. Wesley?
No.
No.
No, okay. Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
No, or excuse me, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That conclude, that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jacob. Alderman Sorrentino, Public Health, Safety, Judiciary, and Ethics.
Well, no report to save me, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I have one, Mayor, and could you please mute your, your microphone because there's a lot of background noise? Thank you, whoever's not speaking. But, yeah, so I have a Public Works Committee, I have approval of a change order number one for ricket station and tank maintenance project, in the amount not to exceed $53,350. That is my motion.
Second, Sorrentino. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on this one? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Rand, Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Does that conclude your report, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Woods?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve, or actually, no, no report, Mayor. I was getting out of myself.
Thank you.
I have a need to talk.
This is a new, new era. It's a good thing we didn't start with the video. Next, other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Wesley?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of list of bills for April 16th, 2020, Alderman Woods?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills for April 16th in the amount
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, Alderman Sismarski, do we have any questions? No questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And Alderman Messina?
Yes.
And that passes. We have no items to, no executive session, no items to be referred, just to all our residents, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, stay safe, take all precautions needed. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Sorrentino.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Reposed? That passes.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.
Be safe, boys.